It's Tuesday, February twenty, twenty twenty-four, seven P. M. City Council meeting, I call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Councilman Becker will be joining us Zoom and eventually in person. Councilman Jacob.
Here.
Councilman.
Here.
Councilman Schultz.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
Item three, public hearings. Tonight we have none. Item four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon: name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless they are elsewhere on the agenda. The consent. Note for the hybrid meeting, if you're on, if you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, you need to hold your virtual hand up. And you will have an opportunity to speak. Public comment in, in, in-house in the audience? Okay, anyone on the Zoom wish to speak? Second call for any public comment? Third and final call for any public comment? This is, public comment is closed. Next, item five, the consent agenda. The consent agenda that is outlined below is hereby presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed, items five A through five I.
You're L.
L, sorry.
Second.
Any debate?
One quick comment, I'm sorry, I don't want to make this meeting any longer than it usually is, but just great to see some amazing citywide events, including the Wings and Wheels Flyin' Breakfast, American Legion Memorial Day Parade, Baseball Fest, Duck Race Day, and Day for Kids. So those were some of the items in the consent agenda, and I think those are awesome for our city and the groups holding those.
I absolutely agree. Would be looking for a motion?
Motion vote.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, petitions, requests, and communications. Review and possible action relating to a proclamation recognizing February eighteenth through the twenty-fourth as twenty twenty-four as Engineers Week in the city of Fort Atkinson. Ms. Howesman.
Thank you. So February twenty, or excuse me, February eighteenth through the twenty-fourth is recognized as Engineers Week by the National Society of Professional Engineers. And today it is a formal coalition of more than seventy engineering, education, and cultural societies, and more than fifty corporations and government agencies dedicated to raising public awareness of engineers' positive contributions to the quality of life. This observance promotes recognition among parents, teachers, and students of the importance of a technical education and a high level of math, science, and technology literacy. So today I'd just like to recognize our city engineer and public works director, Andy Selly, and thank him for his contributions. I won't read through that whole proclamation, but I would recommend that the city council adopt it.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing February eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four as Engineers Week in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, review and possible action relating to a proclamation recognizing February eighth, twenty twenty-four as Monarch Pledge Day in the city of Fort Atkinson. Ms. Howesman.
Thank you. So this is another proclamation that staff recommends the city council approve. We do take the mayor's monarch pledge every year. We do not have a mayor, so I do sign this, but the, the city council can approve this, this proclamation, recognizing the importance of monarch butterflies and indicating that the city does value those and that we have a public commitment to increasing their habitat and support of pollinator-friendly demonstration gardens, which we will have at the Ford Historical Museum this spring.
I move to approve.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing February eighth, twenty twenty-four as Monarch Pledge Day in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, resolutions and ordinances. Tonight we have none. Item eight, reports of officers, boards, and committees. City managers report, Ms. Howesman.
Thank you. On February seventh, I attended two WIDA events in Madison. The first was a presentation from WIDA relating to workforce housing products, and the second was a matchmaking event aimed at connecting emerging developers with municipal projects. I did, I was there representing Fort Atkinson and provided flyers and all sorts of information. Michelle Ebert was there with me. We made a lot of connections with developers, and I actually have several follow-up meetings scheduled over the next two weeks. So it was a successful event. Fire chief Bruce Peterson will begin work with the city on Monday, March fourth. We will be scheduling a swearing-in ceremony in the future and plan to invite stakeholders and community members. We had a really positive meeting today, discussion of transition in the fire department. So that was, that was a really positive meeting. In other staffing news, we've started the interview process for the Parks and Recreation Director position. We received nineteen applications. We're interviewing seven people over the next several weeks. We've also received several applications for the municipal court clerk and administrative assistant position. We will be interviewing candidates this week for that position. Hannah Cleven, our current public safety dispatcher, has been selected as the next police records clerk. She'll be working alongside Lisa Langer for a couple of weeks prior to Lisa's retirement in April. Congratulations to both Hannah and Lisa. Chelsea Ripmeyer, who is currently a part-time public safety dispatcher, will start full-time this week as the city's newest full-time public safety dispatcher. Also, we have hired Fort Atkinson High School senior Ben Stricker to intern in our engineering division this spring. He'll be entering the thrilling world of assessing the condition of pavement and determining road ratings. So I'm sure he's very excited about that, and, and our, our city engineer is very welcome, welcoming to the assistance. I also just want to mention February nineteenth through the twenty-third is Wisconsin's Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week. It's a time to recognize and thank those adults who serve as crossing guards. And so please take a moment and thank a crossing guard this week if you see one anywhere. Tomorrow, Clerk, Treasurer, Finance Director Michelle Ebert will be representing Fort Atkinson at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Regional Roundtable Meeting in West Dallas. And rounding out this week, on Friday, I'm pleased to attend the inauguration of UW-Whitewater Chancellor Corey King in Whitewater. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Moving on. Item nine, unfinished business. Tonight we have none. Item ten, review and possible action relating to an engagement letter with Baker Tilly U.S. L.L.P. to file an independent attestation report with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the city's twenty sixteen Transportation Economic Assistance, T.E.A. grants. Ms. Howesman.
Thank you. So in twenty sixteen, the city received a Transportation Economic Assistance, or T, grant from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation in support of the Rockwell Avenue Reconstruction Project. So this T grant required an agreement between the city and a private company, indicating that that company would create and retain a certain number of jobs over a period of time. So the city did partner with Jones Dairy Farm, which created thirty jobs due to the additional infrastructure constructed with the Rockwell Avenue project. That T grant was in the amount of one million dollars. So it was significant contribution to that. I think it was about a three and a half million dollar overall project on Rockwell Avenue there. So, seven years later, the city is now responsible for creator, commissioning, and, and submitting a, an independent attestation report to confirm the number of jobs created and retained by Jones Dairy Farm over the last seven years. We sought a proposal from our auditing firm, Baker Tilly, and they have provided that, that's in your packet. The, they have estimated the cost at an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. However, it will be based on the time it takes to gather the information and prepare the report. So it is a not to exceed ten thousand dollars. This amount, or this was not budgeted as I did not know that this two thousand sixteen grant required a, an independent attestation report seven years later. But it does, and the city did receive one million dollars from the D.O.T. back in two thousand sixteen to support this project. So proportionally, ten thousand dollars, up to ten thousand dollars to pay for this report, which is required by the D.O.T. I did inquire several times as to whether it was really required or whether we could do something internally, working with Jones Dairy Farm internally to fulfill this requirement, and I was not able to do that. So staff does recommend that the city council approve the proposal from Baker Tilly, an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, to prepare an independent attestation report as required by the D.O.T. per the T grant requirements. And the funding sources are outlined in the, in the memo. This would be paid for by the Water Utility, Waste Water Utility, Storm Water Utility, and Transportation Fund at up to twenty-five thousand dollars from each fund as the overall construction project was also paid out of these funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You said twenty-five hundred or twenty?
I'm, I'm sorry, twenty-five hundred dollars in each of those accounts totaling up to ten thousand dollars, which is the amount of the, not to exceed amount in the proposal. Thank you.
I would have been on the council at that time, and I didn't even remember that there was this requirement. But, so I'm just trying to think of what is the, does it give you that amount of time to complete a project and then for the, your, your partner in the community to find, to create the jobs and then fill them?
Well, I, I think the jobs were, were created at the time in two thousand sixteen, and I think, well, there was also a three-year reporting requirement that was missed in two thousand nineteen. And so now we have the, the seven-year reporting requirement, and that was part of the original agreement that is in your packet. The original agreement is, is in your packet, indicating that those, that independent attestation report is required. So it really was just probably not on the radar as the transition of city managers shifted. So, and the two thousand nineteen report was not filed. I did inquire with the, with the D.O.T. if that was filed, and it wasn't. So I would not expect that it would cost ten thousand dollars to complete this report. I, I, I don't believe that our auditors will have difficulty obtaining the information that they need from Jones Dairy Farm. They have been a partner in this from the beginning, and we're very appreciative of the fact that they were able to partner with the city so that we, the city in two thousand sixteen could receive one million dollars towards this road construction project.
And I would imagine we have every reason to believe that the number was hit and has been maintained.
Correct, we did work through those. I've been in, in contact with Ryan Robinson at Jones Dairy Farm, who has confirmed that those job numbers were, were hit and retained over the seven years.
I move to approve the proposal from Baker Tilly, an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars to prepare an independent attestation report as required by, by the Wisconsin D.O.T. for the T.E.A. grant requirements. Second.
Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Item ten B, review and possible action relating to an alcohol beverage license agent change at Handyspot one oh five LLC, three oh three South Main Street. Ms. Ebert.
Thank you. Handyspot one oh five LLC, three oh three South Main was formerly BP as about a year and a half ago. So if everyone remembers the location on Main Street and Third Street, the manager, I'm sorry, the agent is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the business. So sometimes the agent is the owner of the business for local businesses, and other times the agent is the manager on site. They're in charge of ordering the product for the store, hiring, scheduling, firing, paying all the bills. This was a, a change a year ago, and then they had another agent that one didn't work out. So here they have point another agent yet. A background check was performed as required, and it was successful. We have no concerns. There is a ten-dollar fee associated with an agent change, which was paid. And so I would recommend approval. The license committee did meet on February sixth and reviewed this item, and they did recommend council approval. Happy to answer any questions? If not, we'd be looking for the motion as provided.
I move to approve alcohol beverage license agent change for Handyspot one oh five LLC at three oh three South Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten B. Nope, sorry. Item ten C, review and possible action relating to a replacement of two portions of the municipal roof and, and tuck pointing. Mr. Drager.
Hello. Uh, this project started off on Brooke Francine's, the Park, Park and Rec Director's desk, and due to her known upcoming fraternity leave, they asked, or she asked me to kind of join in on it so that I could step in in the case that she was not available for this part. But we did work together on the majority of this project, getting estimates, proposals, and putting this all together. So I would like to sort of, as we all know, there are some roof problems on a couple of sections of the building currently. Particularly, I don't know if we've seen in the packet, there is a, a map there showing one, two, three, and four different sections of the roof, starting from the west moving east. The two portions of the roof in question are one and two, starting on the west over the dance studio, moving towards the upper area of the Parks Department over there, and both are experiencing leaks. So we had roofing contractors come in and assess the, the building as a whole, and then also primarily those two sections to see if both sections needed to be replaced or if a repair would be necessary or could, you know, push this project a little bit further off. Just basically analyze where we were at with the, with the structure itself. And that includes the tuck pointing on the building as well. We had several contractors come and take a look at the tuck pointing to see if that could be prolonged or if there are some areas that needed to be attended to immediately, just to kind of get an overall view of where we were at. All three contractors that looked at the roofs looked at section one, which is one we thought was primarily the issue, and did say it is at the end of its life, and we are experiencing some leaks there. And two of those contractors would like, did not even suggest repairing that. I should point out that the third contractor that did suggest a repair did not get us a quote for the project, for the repair project or the overall project. So we're gonna take the opinion of the first two. And then also while these contractors were looking at the upper portion of the Parks Department, they noticed that that was actually the most severely damaged, I shouldn't say damaged, but one with the most wear and tear on it, and then the most need of repair or replacement, rather. Along with that, there are several sections of the building where tuck pointing is in need to be immediately repaired or it's going to continue to produce leaks in other parts of the building. That's where we see those estimates for a couple of sections of the roof and the inside of the parapets, which is where the roofs that we have currently come on, come up and tuck under the caps. And inside of there, that tuck pointing and that, that brickwork is failing. So it's a very easy spot for, for rainwater to access those. So in short, we do, we did budget in the capital improvement for fifty-five thousand for replacing one section of the roof and some tuck pointing after having an assessment done with these contractors and noticed that there is two sections that are in need of replacement in order to stop the current leaks that we have, as well as some repairs that need to be done on the parapets to prevent and in order to stop the current leaks as well. So it is, it is the staff's recommendation to go with Great Lakes Roofing and Holton Brothers with their proposals, proposals for the two sections of roof replacement, as well as the immediate repairs to the tuck point on the parapets and two sections of the, of the building corners. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I would be curious, as I do not know, what exactly is tuck pointing?
Tuck pointing is, so the brickwork, when it's laid, it gets mortar in between the bricks. Tuck point is going through and using a grinder blade to cut out the failing mortar that is in there as deep as they can get it, and then they come through and tuck point new mortar into those cracks.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So I will note just a couple of additional items here, just that, as Jed mentioned, there was fifty-five thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-four CIP. The source of that funding was ARPA funds, and the total cost of this project is now ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. That is beyond what was included in the twenty twenty-four CIP. However, there are additional ARPA funds available that can be used for this project. The total allocation through the budget, the twenty twenty-four budget, including this project for ARPA funds is about two hundred thousand dollars to be expended in twenty twenty-four. And I, as I note in the memo, all of the ARPA funds must be allocated to specific projects by the end of twenty twenty-four. So we do intend to provide a report and proposal allocating the remainder of the funds to, presenting that to the city council this summer for approval.
I would also like to point out in the memo, I did note in there that all the roofing contractors were also bringing up that sections three and four are very near and at the end of their roof life, or their lifetime as well. And we would be looking at some leaking going on there if we do not budget for something like that in the next five years at, at a maximum. So just to point that out.
I think this is a great thing, you know, being we did bump it up. You know, originally, if anybody paid attention to the original budget, this was pushed off for a few years. We bumped it up now to help us expedite, and just seeing what the prices are. I think it's a good thing we did, being they're already over what we'd budgeted for five years out. So that's, that I'd move to approve the proposals from Great Lakes Roofing and Holton Brothers Incorporated for repairs and improvements to the municipal building in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand, seven eighty-five dollars.
Second.
Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten D, review and possible action on a state municipal agreement for carbon reduction grant. Mr. Selly.
Thank you. We applied for this grant in two thousand twenty-three, or we're awarded the, the grant in two thousand twenty-three. And this is, the project that we had put forward was essentially replacing the signals that we have through the downtown. There's four intersections, Madison Avenue, Sherman Avenue, Milwaukee Avenue, and Third Street. Those signals are just simply timed. There's no way to change those up in terms of traffic flow volumes and things like that. So the proposal that we put forward for the grant was to make them smart signals, essentially, that would allow them to, to anticipate traffic, queuing, and things like that, to reduce idling time, which was the goal of this carbon reduction grant. We were, we went through some back and forth with the D.O.T., but they have confirmed that those funds are available. The total amount was a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars that was awarded. Of that, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars is our twenty percent portion of that grant. The the cost of this, the original estimates that we had were, were above a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. I'm not sure that those estimates have not increased even further. So I had that conversation with the D.O.T. indicating, hey, if, if, you know, we find that this becomes too expensive to move forward on, what are our options? And they indicated that signing of the state municipal agreement is step one. If we do find that the project has skyrocketed in terms of costs, we can simply basically end the project without any negative influ, or negative impacts to the city at that time and move on. So I, I do have some concerns about whether or not this will move forward, so I just want to make you aware of that. But the signing of the state municipal agreement and the commitment for us to move forward, if in fact it makes financial sense, is something that we can do and does not have any negative impact to the city, should we rescind that at a later date. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has on this matter.
Can you tell me a little bit more about how the smart signal works?
Yeah, the, the, the best example that I can give you are the signals that we put in out at the intersection of Rena Avenue and Madison Avenue, and then also at Lexington and Madison Avenue. There's cameras on those that essentially recognize the presence of vehicles, and then they will adjust turning times, green light times, and various intersections will remain open if there isn't another vehicle queued up in the, in the other opposite leg of the intersection. We also have inquired about the ability to make sure that we've got pedestrian-activated buttons on all of these signals, because obviously if there's no traffic coming across at Milwaukee Street and Main Street remains open, but a pedestrian perhaps wants to cross there, we need to make sure that those, those types of calls for a signal are also involved in that. So I think we are, are estimates for these that we received from one of the vendors did include that pedestrian-activated option as well.
And do they talk to one another? Like, I'm thinking specifically on Main Street. So if there's no car at a certain intersection, but there's a backup on the other, does it kind of like, do they all sync up in some way?
I believe they do, but I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you. I didn't get to that level of, of understanding of whether each of the, the four, you know, if you're, if you begin at Madison Avenue, can you make it all the way through with, with green lights, you know? If it makes sense to do so. So I'm not positive. I would assume that they do, but I haven't specifically looked at that.
That would be my biggest concern, being down here at Milwaukee and Third, in between there gets so congested. You know, if one's activating more than the other, that can really cause a problem in that area. I've talked to a few people that have reached out about that concern with the smart signals.
Yeah.
That being too tight of a corridor. The camera ones, if they don't communicate all up and down. You know, it's nice right now, if you really pay attention, you start out at Third, you'll basically hit all of them green if you maintain your speed correctly.
Right.
So, which is nice for straight-through flow. It does cause problems for cross traffic.
It works great most, you know, ninety percent of the time, right? It's those fifteen minutes in the morning and ten minutes or so in the afternoon sometimes that. So I'll look into those, those concerns specifically with that, with that vendor as we kind of move forward investigating this. Okay.
You mentioned several locations that were gonna have this added to them?
Correct.
Would, was Robert Street and one oh six where they meet by the bridge? Is that one of them?
No, it's not. This is for Main Street, so the four intersections along the Main Street corridor, Madison Avenue up here, up this way, where we've got, we have the Chamber up there, Walgreens, that intersection, and then Sherman Avenue, which is right out here with the Creamery Building on the corner, and then Milwaukee Avenue, which has what, J and M Flooring and Carpets at the corner there, and then Third Street, which has the Brum's Tire Service and then City Parking Lot there on the other corner.
I, I know in the kind of old days, they had like a sensor built in under the pavement. It would sense if a car pulled up, it would stay green going one way on the main. on the main thoroughfare unless somebody pulled up from the side, and it would sense them.
Yeah.
Do we have that on, on Robert Street either?
We, well, we have those on, we had them on Robert Street. I think we still have them in place at Madison Avenue and Robert Street. I don't know that we still have them in place at the Riverside Drive and Robert Street intersection. We had them there before we did the bridge. And I don't know if we reinstalled those there or not. That's, that's a Nick Armstrong question. I wish I had him up here to, yeah, we do have. I think we have cameras in the east-west direction on Riverside Drive. I'm not sure if we have them north-south. But, yeah, I, I don't know. I can find out.
I, I know that I've had several citizens who, in our fine city, have noticed that when they're at that intersection of 106 and Robert Street, that sometimes it takes forever and there's not a car in sight.
Yeah. Yeah, we did look at those, that intersection, as well as the Third Street intersection, or Milwaukee Avenue intersection, and the Third Street intersection to the south, because there was some issues with, there were some issues with queuing. There were some issues with pedestrians in that area. We had a couple, I think a bike and then a pedestrian that were struck. So there is some signal coordination between Third Street and Riverside Drive and Madison Avenue, but exactly how that is maintained is something I'm not exactly sure about.
Thank you.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to sign the state municipal agreement with the DOT for the carbon reduction grant award for the Main Street Signal Project.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10E, review and possible action to the design contract for South Main Street pedestrian path and road improvements. Mr. Sully.
Yeah, thank you. I think council has, has heard of this project. Previously, we were awarded a TAP grant, Transportation Alternatives Program Grant, that was, we were eligible for because of a safe routes to school study that we had done, I think, back in 2017, 18, somewhere in that timeframe. The project's total award of the grant was one point two million. Of that, two hundred and fifty-two thousand is the estimated city portion, and that is to put a path on Main Street from Rockwell Avenue all the way to the south at Hackarth Road. The design proposals, or there was a request for proposals that went out for design in December on this. We originally received one design proposal. I put it back out with a request for more proposals, and we got a second proposal on this. So MSA and Rukert Milkie were the two design firms that, that provided proposals. We have worked with both of them in the past and have had good experiences with them. As I noted in the memo, the, the analysis of the two proposals was, was really even, and both firms can do a great job of this. So in the end, the less expensive proposal from MSA at a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars was the, the deciding factor in awarding this design contract to them. I'd be happy to take any questions that council may have.
Is this path on the east or the west side of the Main Street?
Yes. I'm not sure yet.
Well done.
That is, that is the question that will be, will be answered. I suspect, so it will be driven by a couple of different things. One, the right-of-way consistency through there, which is generally fairly consistent width. Number two, the number of interactions that we have with driveways through that section. Number three will be utilities that are buried in there. We can all see the above-ground utilities with the poles and things like that. And number four will be the grades, so, which generally speaking are about the same on both sides. So a quick analysis on, on my end of looking through that corridor really didn't bring up anything that was heavily weighted towards one side or the other. So we'll figure that out. I think the below-ground utilities will be helpful to understand where the gas is at, any cable, fiber, that kind of stuff.
I'm, I'm a big proponent of these bicycle paths and pedestrian paths. I think they get an amazing amount of use here in town. Is this path that we're proposing, is it road level, or is it raised up like by a curb?
It will not be, so it should be road level. My goal is to make it an off-street path, so you will not be interacting with any vehicles on this path. It'd be very similar to the path that we have along Rockwell Avenue, where it's a dedicated off-street, so.
That'll be a path, little bit of terrace, and then the road.
Correct. Yeah, that's the idea. But again, that, that plays out a little bit with the, the right-of-way width through there. We're going to narrow Main Street down through there as well. So there's, I don't want to commit too much to anything at this point until we get some pencils on paper yet, but, but yeah, in a perfect world, we would have something very similar to the cross-section we have at Rockwell Avenue.
So do, I know it's just in concept right now, but in narrowing the width of the street and then adding the, the the paved surface to accommodate the eight to ten-foot path, ultimately, are we looking about the same footprint? All, all that, I mean, what the, the width that the street takes up right now?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
The street is, the street is, I think, face-to-face is forty-eight feet. Most of our streets are in the neighborhood of thirty-two feet face-to-face. So we've got quite a bit of narrowing that we can do through there. I'm not really sure, I'm not sure why South Main was built that wide. I don't know if they, you know, way back when, when they were planning the city and laying it out, if they anticipated a larger amount of traffic moving through there. But certainly, we have plenty of driveways all the way through that corridor, so there isn't really much in the way of on-street parking needed. So we, we have ample room, frankly, to, to narrow that road and fit this, this additional bike path or ped path in there. I should note, too, that it's really important in this particular part of town, because we don't have a lot of sidewalks in this area. This is a vintage of homes that developed, you know, during a time when, when we were not as pedestrian-friendly, I would say, or not quite as cognizant of that, you know, just as a community and society at that time. So this will be a nice way for folks to, you know, maybe travel on residential roads if they, if they need to travel on the road, but then get to South Main Street as a nice, north-south collector, if you will, for people that are walking and biking.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the design contract with MSA in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars for the South Main Street pedestrian path and road improvements project. Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 11, claims appropriations and contract payments. Review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and authorization of payments. Ms. Ever.
Okay.
I move to approve the verified claims as presented.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Jacob.
Aye.
Councilman Lescoher.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 12A, the city council may consider a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to state statute 19.851C to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
I move to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five one C to conduct the annual performance evaluation of the city manager.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session.